Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the November 28, 2006 meeting of the Glendale City Council. Being called to order at the late hour of 6:08 PM, Mayor Weaver will call.
Councilmembers Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Yusefian.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. The flight salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Najarian and the vacation by City Clerk Artie Kassakian. Please stand.
Please rise and face the flag. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happiness lies not in the mere possession of money or material wealth. It lies in the joy of achievement, in the thrill of creative effort, and the spirit of giving. Let us pray for the welfare of all our residents and for a safe holiday season for all who work and live in Glendale, and remind ourselves, our family and friends, of the true spirit of this season, of charity, peace, and love. Let us pray for our servicemen and women who endure harsh conditions away from loved ones in the service of their country. We pray for their safety and their return home. Let us work in concert with one another to achieve what is best for our city and our neighbors. Amen.
Thank you. May we have your report?
Agenda for the November 28, 2006 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was postponed Wednesday, November 22, 2006, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And next?
At 3 is presentations and appointments. At 3 is agenda preview for the meeting of December 5, 2006.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for December 5, we have no housing agenda items. For the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, there's one business agenda item. It's regarding Alex Theater art board quarterly report and Phase 1 of the sound system upgrade project. A joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, it's regarding parking assistance package for Outback Steakhouse and time changes in Marketplace Garage and 100 South Lock of Rand Boulevard. Another joint public hearing of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority, City Attorney regarding 601 Palm. The City Council meeting, December 5. Our federal lobbyist, David Church and Associates, will be here for an update under presentation. Under consent items, fire chief regarding proposed appropriation for replacement of fire communications uninterruptible power supply system. Director of GWP provides security guard services at GWP's Utility Operations Center and other locations as needed in the area. We also will have the City Manager Commission on the Status of Women, 2004 through 2006 report. Under ordinances, we are adding a chapter to the Glendale Municipal Code relating to the Department and suspension of contracts. Action items, City Manager, consideration of licensing requirements for tobacco retailers. And lastly, City Attorney, discussion of City Council, consideration of alternative resolutions supporting Armand Babajanian. And one other item, Director of Public Works, regarding proposed agreement with MWW Group for lobbying public relations and advocacy services in acquiring funding for transportation projects. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just so the public isn't misled, the 601 Palm matter may not go. Still working with the applicant on some language, so that may be deferred until the 19th of December.
I understand the applicant's actually asked for a continuation.
I saw that email today.
Right.
So it may be deferred until the 19th of December.
Okay. Thank you. Next, please.
At 3B is appointment of Mr. Alec Bagdaserin to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee for a three-year term to expire November 28, 2009, nominated by Councilmember Manukian.
I'll move 3B. Second?
Roll call.
Councilmembers Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Next?
Next is a 3C appointment of Mr. Gary Cornell to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee for a two-year term to expire November 28, 2008, nominated by Councilmember Quintero.
I'll move Gary Cornell.
Second?
Roll call.
Councilmembers Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Mayor Weaver.
No. See, there's something else. I didn't forget. Oh, yeah, I know what it is. Elaine, would you please go down to the podium?
Yeah, Elaine.
I know, it's highly unusual, but...
I don't see this on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, because this is a surprise. I have a little mayor's commendation for you. This is your last council meeting, correct?
Yes, sir.
Don't smile when you say that.
Yeah.
No, just days. I haven't got down to minutes yet.
I'm going to be giving you a proclamation that reads in whole, "In recognition of your exemplary commitment to the highest values of integrity, professionalism, and community service, and with sincerest gratitude for your five years of visionary leadership as our planning director. Under your expert guidance, a much-needed comprehensive zoning code review was accomplished. The San Fernando Corridor and East Broadway zoning changes were completed. The general plan safety element was updated, and the downtown specific plan was approved."
Hooray.
Elaine, you will be greatly missed by the many people who have had the privilege to work with you. Best wishes and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you want to take a picture with it?
Yeah. Oh. You want to hold it up facing?
See, this is what they tell us to do. Well, thank you very much, Mayor.
And you will be greatly missed. I know you've taken heat. What's that old saying, if you can't take the heat in the kitchen, get out? No, that doesn't apply now. You're retired.
I'm going into the kitchen. That's probably where I'll spend a lot of time.
I spoke with your husband. No, but you've done so much for us. It hasn't been easy a lot, but the things that you've accomplished in the five years are great, and you've left a great legacy for whoever follows you, and you will be missed.
Well, and it's been a great five years, and I feel the department is in pretty great shape to continue some of the things that we've done and turn some new approaches and new efforts. And I think that I'm leaving Glendale in pretty good condition with the planning staff you have, and so I can leave with good heart. And I thank you for this recognition. I was just looking at my wall today. One of the staff said this was my good gal wall, because I have a number of certificates and commendations and things from previous places I've worked. And I said, well, it's kind of lonely, because I don't have anything from Glendale. So now, when I set it up at home in my study, and I have all these things, I'll have a wonderful one from Glendale, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I would also like to congratulate her for her service to the community and the City of Glendale, the organization, as well as the community. And I've appreciated the past five years, our professional relationship in terms of the city and some of the issues that we've tackled, as well as I appreciate your friendship as well. So thank you very much for your service, and we look forward to seeing you in the community.
Yeah, and Elaine, I also want to say that in terms of your professional approach, I don't know if it's your Canadian background, growing up in Toronto, that beautiful urban environment, but I think you've done a great job of moving Glendale's downtown into another level, I hope. And just overall, I think you've really got a great vision for what this city needed. I think you've done a tremendous job. You're just chock-full of information. Anytime you ask a question, you always have an answer, and have some wisdom, and have options. So overall, I just think you've done a great job. It's been a real pleasure working with you.
Thank you. And I haven't lost my Canadian accent, so I guess I still have a little Canadian left.
Someday we'll teach her American.
Just remember, we have video streaming, so you can watch us every week.
Oh, I'm sure I'll catch the odd meeting.
I'm sure.
Okay, now back to work.
Grill her one more time. Okay, what is next, please?
Next is City Council or staff comments?
Yeah, Mr. Manukian.
Yes, this Sunday I will be out at, it's the first Sunday of the month, I will be out at the Montrose Market. And next, not this Thursday, but next Thursday, I will be at Market on Brand, just so people know.
And I guess we'll all be in Montrose come Saturday.
Saturday, yeah.
After SC beats UCLA in the game.
The chances of that happening is slim, I heard.
Really?
Yeah, they're giving 3-1 UCLA.
What paper you been reading?
Glendale News Press, wasn't it?
Jeez. Yeah, UCLA is number one in the country. Not bad. Where's Northridge?
Number two.
Okay. I have one thing, too. This, because of the game on Saturday at the Rose Bowl, decoration of the rose floats have been postponed to Sunday. There'd be no place for the volunteers to park down around the Rose Bowl this weekend on Saturday. So Glendale and a number of other cities, we will start decorating on Sunday, December the 3rd. We'll be working each Saturday after that until Christmas, and after Christmas, from the 26th through the 31st, until we are done. We're looking for volunteers that would like to sign up. We'll probably have 500 to 600 by the time we're done. And the advantage to the students, who comprise the bulk of the volunteers from our different schools, is they get community service hours. So if any students out there need the 10 hours of community service, you can either call, what's on the screen, the 249-0226 number, or you can get on the website, www.glandalerosfloat.org. And if you get on there, look for float decoration information. The forms are there and can be downloaded, and you can fill it out there. So we'll start, for Christmas, I think we work from 8 to 4, or, excuse me, 9 to 4. And then after Christmas, 8:00 in the morning till midnight, if we have to. But I'm the crew chief, and we've never gone that late yet. So we expect to cut out by 6:00 in the evenings. We can't. So if you've never done it, it's a great experience to be up close and actually put your hands on the float and see it decorated. To see it in one month's time go from what it is until you see it parade day, it's a huge, huge difference. Glendale has more volunteers than any other float entry, and we will be probably working on four or five floats at the beginning when the other organizations don't come in as much. So students particularly, if you need the hours, here's an easy way to get them. Thank you very much. And what is next, please?
There are no other comments. Next is consent items. Following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Mr. Manukian?
I'd like to pull 5B, and I'll move 5A and C.
Just a second.
Second.
Two seconds, roll call.
Councilmembers Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. 5B for...
5B is Director of Glendale Public Works regarding Stalker Street Rehabilitation Project, Phase 1, Plans Number 1-2824, 4-574, and 50-460, Spec Number 3065. At B1 is resolution adopting plans and specs and directing City Clerk to advertise for bids.
Mr. Manukian.
This is the Stalker Street Rehab Project, and...
That's correct.
It's a very encompassing rehab. How long will it take? I know that area is very...
Congested?
Impacted by traffic, actually, with the schools down the street. So what is...
This is...
I know we're going out for bid, just for information purposes.
Right.
This is happening, and that everyone knows, and what it's going to take, and all of that.
Right, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Manukian, this is the first step. So we are anticipating that we would begin construction approximately April of next year, 2007, and complete the work by early summer, June 2007?
So a couple, two, three months?
Right. The actual construction process is, this is a shorter segment. We're going to be doing more of Stalker in the future, but we're doing this first segment...
Shouldn't we plan it for summer months as opposed to April or June? So there is no school traffic?
Well, we were going to do the second part of it, hopefully, in the deeper summer months.
But the second part of it is east of Pacific, if I'm not mistaken?
Correct.
So the school traffic is not as much on that side as it is on the west side?
This is east side, also.
This is Pacific, Pacific and Dorothy.
I'm sorry, west, we're going, yeah, we'll be going to the next segment on the other side. The west side of Pacific will be the second segment. This is the east side. This is where...
Okay, this is the east side. This is the east side of Pacific?
Correct.
Okay. And the west side will be done this summer?
That's, we're anticipating, correct.
Okay.
This was the segment, if you recall, where we had a property exchange with the developer of a piece of property on the corner, which allowed us to take what's, a street that's slightly askew, and straighten it out. So we wanted to do that phase first.
Okay.
Okay. I have one speaker in 5B. Herbert Milano, two minutes.
My name is Herbert Milano, Mayor Weaver, members of the City Council, city staff. Now that we bring up to the agenda item, a street reconstruction and resurfacing, it is my wish that on a periodic basis, whenever we have any type of project like this, that we get a status report on the conditions of all of our roadways, and what percentage of those roadways are being repaired. Ideally, I'd like to see a report sometime in the future where we know what the objectives are for the following year as well. In 2001, we had an extensive study of all the roadways. We had another one performed last year. It was a very thick book, about six inches thick, where every roadway was studied and evaluated. And my take on that particular report is that we have at least 100 miles of roadway that are considerably quite deficient. And maybe Mr. Sir can highlight for us what percentage of that 100 miles are being addressed this time, and what the objectives are for future roadway construction and resurfacing are planned for the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Quick, response...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, every year when we go through the budgetary process and the CIP, that question invariably comes up, at least with regards to about how much work we do. And I've stated that we do approximately, and this includes all of the pavement maintenance that we do, approximately 10 miles, a little less than 10 miles a year, is what we do.
Which is up from the past?
It's actually down a little bit from the past.
Is it down now?
It's down. We've kind of hit an area where we're maintaining our level, but we're beginning, as prices go up, beginning to see a little bit of a drop. We came to council to give you a report on the comprehensive pavement management system once, planning to do that again in the very near future. I'm thinking probably within the next four to six weeks, you'll get that report again. You'll get to see from our pavement quality index, which I've also related to you during our budget sessions, that we're at about an average of 70%, out of 100 being best, zero being worst, obviously, which is about the goal that we had set for ourselves. So we're maintaining that, although we'll take a look at what the future holds with regards to street conditions and budgetary issues.
And you could also always do more if you had more money.
That's correct.
I think, Mr. Mayor, if I can add, the other thing that's important is the relative priority that Glendale has and does place on streets versus other comparable communities.
You mean like Los Angeles?
Well, pick any of them, just about. And I think you'll find Glendale has historically and continues to place a very high priority on streets. Granted, it doesn't get every dime, but it gets a relatively high proportion of resources, especially juxtaposed to other communities. And as a result, I think you'll find the streets generally, and the pavement management program would show this, are generally very good condition compared to other communities, comparable to Glendale, and especially our neighbors.
Thank you. Is there a motion on 5B?
So moved.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Next, please.
Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The City Manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. First Speaker, Albert Hoffman.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, council members, and staff. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. This is accommodation for Elaine from the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council. And we tried to get you to come to our meeting, but you kind of didn't want to do that. But we'll get you pretty soon, anyhow. But I personally, I met you, I guess, in the heat of the Town Center negotiations going on. You came in right in the middle of some really hectic things. And as time went on, I got involved into the presidency of the Coordinating Council. In this past year, I want to really thank you and your staff for what you've done for our council, to keep us informed of what's going on and recognizing us as an important group in the city. And particularly, I want to thank you for getting me involved in the downtown specific plan. And that was really a great opportunity, and I hope that you'll see this thing really develop, that in about 10 years, you'll see something really happen here in Glendale that will look like, it won't be Manhattan, but it'll be something like I see is going on in Pasadena and Burbank. They're already doing these things, and we need to catch up and do them. And I think we have a great plan. And thanks to you, you did a great role in that, and we sure appreciated your support of our organization, and we wish you all the best in the future. And keep in touch with us, and we'll keep sending you agendas or something, just to let you know what's going on. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next Speaker, Linda Patrick. Linda Patrick and company.
Time for relay again?
We're back.
And then one word...
Hello, my name is Linda Patrick, and I am here on behalf of my co-chairs, Mike Haney and Harold Scoggins, who couldn't be here tonight. And I'm with my committee. We're here to thank you, and we're here to thank others that are on our list, and I have some gifts for you, too, from the American Cancer Society. Artie, can I give these to you? That's for Dave. They have names on them. And I also have these to pass out. Do you all like them?
Goes with the white one.
Yeah. Some new hats for this next year. We want to say thank you to the City of Glendale, to our honorary Chair, Dave Weaver, to our wonderful council members, to our execs that are here and in the city for supporting our event. We couldn't have done it without you, and we're very happy, and it makes us happy that we work for a company, a city, that's so supportive of us. I want to hand over the thank yous to some of my committee members that are here, and have them introduce themselves. They are, as you know, as I've said before, the most wonderful committee in the whole wide world, and I just wanted to say hi to you tonight. I'd first like to say thank you to our two presenting sponsors, USC Norris Cancer Hospital, and one of our presenting sponsors is here, Art and Paula Devine. Art's not here, but Paula is.
She has to work.
Okay, so let me just pass this over to Christina, and she's going to introduce herself and thank some sponsors.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, council members. My name is Christina Kazazian. We'd like to thank on behalf of the committee, the Alex Theater, Arm Kazazian, Ara Tominitman, Arroyo Investment Group, Burbank Kiwanis, City Cab.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Linda Burns. I was on the committee, and I'd like to continue thanking sponsors. Conroy's Flowers for providing the flowers for our survivors, Disney, Don Francisco's Gourmet Coffee, Frank de Pietro and Sons, GK and Associates, and the Glendale City Employees Association.
My name's Doris Tweet, and I would like to thank the Glendale City Employees Federal Credit Union, Glendale Firefighters Association, Glendale Kiwanis, Glendale Management Association, Glendale Memorial Hospital, and Glendale Parks Recreation and Community Services.
You should be clapping.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'd like to thank Glendale Police Officers Association, Glendale Public Works, Glendale Water and Power, Gourmet 88, Greg Astorian, and Jamba Juice.
Okay, Diana.
I'm Diana Valentine. I want to thank Jewel City Kiwanis, Marie Callenders of Montebello, Milano's Italian Restaurant, MV Transportation, and One Step Data.
Okay, Coco. And would you also give your little report?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Coco Panosian. I'd like to extend the special thanks to Pacific BMW, Parking Concepts Incorporated, Pecana Steakhouse, Print on All Incorporated, Prudential California Glen Oaks, and Sidewalk Cafe.
And Anna.
Good evening. My name is Santa Maria De Merjian, and I was on the Survivorship Committee, and I would like to thank Southland Transit, Starbucks located on Glendale Avenue and Wilson, Super Shuttle, and The Creative Source.
Good evening. Gillian Van Miden. I was a member of the committee, and I was the head of recruitment, and I'm here to thank all of the team captains and all of the participants. Thank you so much for your wonderful support.
And we have a little gift for our team captain, Yasmin Beers. She was a great captain. Now Coco's going to give you a little rundown on what we did.
I will make this quick. We did hit our 150,000-plus mark, and the money keeps coming in, so we thank everyone still sending in their checks to the cause. We have the top five teams listed here. Number five comes in Cancer Busted, Cancer Defeated by Hope, at $6,033. Hearts of Cure Beings came in fourth at $7,074. Team GMA came in at third, $10,143. West Wing Walkers were at $15,316, came in second place. And the first team that came in first place this year was Hope Rises 2, for the second year, $18,733.
I'd like to call Barry McCombe, just for his thanks to the entertainment this year.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I and Barry McCombe actually had the privilege together with Maria Sahaqian of being the co-chair of the entertainment committee this year. And we had what we thought was a pretty good lineup of entertainers who could have been playing other places in the Los Angeles area, making money, but they decided on this weekend to donate their talent and times to this event. The first thank you goes to Amy Rangel and the Glendale High School Marching Band that helped us kick off the event this year. The kids gave up their Saturday morning to come out and attend the opening ceremony. A very young performer named Shay Louise, who has a big voice, that came highly recommended to us by our mayor. Brock Hillman, who can be seen many weekends at the knitting factory in Hollywood. Band called Tracer, which played hits from the '60s to present, that performs at festivals throughout the Southern California area. Kekik Pedalian, who played a mix of traditional Armenian music for us. Kelly Burgess, whose music can be heard on motion picture soundtracks and television programs. And also, Si brought back his Karaoke Cafe. Si, many of you will know, is a city employee. 20th Century Fox, very graciously allowed us to screen Cheaper by the Dozen 2 as our very chilly midnight movie outside. And finally, we have to thank Juan Diaz, DJ 007, for keeping the music flowing throughout the entire 24-hour period. And I would like to extend a special thanks to my crew from the Alex Theater, who once again got behind the event and provided the stage production. Thank you.
Can't forget Elena. I just want to say, she's our angel. I just want to say another thing. There are 3 million women in the United States that have cancer. 1 million don't know they have it. That's why we're here, and we thank you again.
Thank you. Good job. Doris, don't go away. Next Speaker, Doris Tweet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Starbird, staff, and citizens. My name is Doris Tweet. My name is Doris Tweet. I'm here today representing two events that include and complement each other. First, Glendale Beautiful invites you and the community to celebrate Casa Adobe de San Rafael's 135th birthday. This celebration will be incorporated into the annual luminaries and open house, which will be held Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, December 8th to the 10th. The birthday event will be on Saturday, December 9th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. There will be traditional birthday cake and hot chocolate. Mariachi and ballet folkloric groups have been invited. Hoover High Band and Choir will be performing throughout the day, and there will be a pinata party at 3:00. The weekend-long event begins on Friday with the luminaries and open house from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Saturday with the birthday celebration from 1:00 to 3:00, and luminaries and open house again from 5:00 to 8:00. On Sunday, the open house from 1:00 to 3:00. In addition to this, the Casa Adobe is also on the Hoover High PTSA Tour of Homes on Saturday, December 9th. The tour of homes is from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., featuring four properties. These are Christmas Fantasy at 1817 Cleveland Road, decorated by Beverly Ann Flowers, featuring Country Kitchen Boutique. The second is Christmas Spectacular, 1600 Virginia Avenue, decorated by Ivy's Flower Station, featuring music, Hoover High Jazz Band. And Christmas Safari at 1614 Art Even, decorated by Kenneth Village Flower, featuring tea pouring ceremony. And then also, the Casa Adobe Christmas Luminaries. Tickets for the event are $15 pre-sale, $20 at the door, and tickets are available at Beverly Ann Flowers, Kenneth Village Flowers, Ivy's Flower Station, Hoover High School, Toll Middle School, Mark Keppel, GNC Properties, Jerry Cragnotti, and selected merchants in Kenneth Village. And we hope to see you all at the birthday celebration. It's an important event in the city. It's a historical building, 135 years old. Thank you.
Thank you, Doris. Next speaker, Herbert Milano, followed by Paula Devine.
My name is Herbert Milano, Mayor Weaver, members of the city council, city staff. First, let me address to you the, my, I guess, my thanks and appreciation for the efforts that you took last week in approving the half acre for Cedar Park. I think that those individuals and residents of Southern Glendale are very appreciative every time you take a step in the right direction to recognize that our need and appreciation for green open space is just as strong as those individuals who live near the hillsides and who also want to preserve our green spaces here in Glendale. Our need, of course, is so much greater, because for so many decades, we have had such a significant inattention to our needs, and today we find ourselves, comparatively, finding that we have 1/10th of the park area found north of the 134 freeway, and yet our population is fairly equivalent. The excuse has always been that there isn't enough money and that land is too expensive, but it's always been, even if you go back to the 1970s, under the same excuse. And when I addressed the issue to councilmen, they said, "Well, I'm only 20% of the decision. We need to convince two more." Well, we already know that we need a troika to run the city. What I need to know, figure, and figure out is how committed you are to convincing the two other councilmen to address our need for open space appropriately and to put it in a strategic plan and to budget for it. It is not such a hard thing for you to recognize that even though none of you live south of the 134 freeway, that we need the open space, contiguous large open space. Many people don't realize that half an acre is no larger than about three parcels of land. That's it. You can't throw a football from one side without running it to the street in that type of size park. I would care to mention to you that my presentations in the past have been to do with recommending a large contiguous urban park for our downtown, that it is absolutely needed due to the tremendous increase in population. But oftentimes, after I finished speaking, I would get some type of rebuttal or some type of answer that doesn't really address the issue forthrightly. Several weeks ago, Mr. Yusefian said that the way our system works, many people don't quite understand, and that you have a different constituency. Who is your different constituency? Of course, Mr. Yusefian is not here to answer, that the people of Glendale have made a choice. But I often wonder if it is the people of Glendale who really have a choice when they go out there to vote. My contention is that there are three constituencies that prevail in Glendale time and again. One constituency is the Glendale Management Association, a group of about 206 mid-level and upper-level management who put their money together and contribute to your campaign. And when their turn comes up for races, it goes without any debate. There's always money for that. The other constituency are the developers, real estate interests, that help fund your campaign. So when they want their desires fulfilled, you toe the line and you fulfill it. We see it with the downtown specific plan. We see it with all types of development everywhere. And yet, the need for parking open space is left behind. The third constituency is one that I would love for that constituency to come in front of the city council and tell us what their vision for the city is, and that is the local chapter of the Armenian National Committee. Without the support of the Armenian National Committee, it appears that we cannot get a city councilman elected. And I don't remember there ever, this organization coming before you to tell us what their concerns are about youth, or what their concerns are concerning the status of our roadways, or what their concerns are concerning parking open space. But I do know that of the councilmen present, you wouldn't be here without the support of the Armenian National Committee, so I would love for them to come before us and let us know what their vision for Glendale is. And that's your constituency. So I would love, in the future, that our needs of their residents someday will have enough impact for you guys to really address the rest of the deficiencies. Thank you.
Paula Devine, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Mayor Weaver, members of council, my name is Paula Devine. Once again, it's time for the Commission on the Status of Women to search for their Jewel of Glendale Women of Courage awards. Each year, we recognize two Glendale women who have persevered through physical, medical, financial, professional, or emotional hardships or challenges to become positive role models in our community. Two Glendale women will be honored on March 8th. Please mark your calendars, March 8th, 2007. Usually, we have a luncheon, and this year it's going to be a very nice dinner. In order to get applications for nominees, you may go to our website, and it's brand new, and it's women@ci.glendale.ca.us. And it's brand new, and you can get information about the commission, our history, our agendas, our publications, our resource materials, news, and events. And it's a good way to contact us about any issues that you would like for the commission to address. So please, I encourage anyone in the community that knows a woman who has fought through hardship in her life and come out on the other side stronger and better than ever, and we would love to honor her on March the 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula reminded Mr. Quintero and I.
For our conversation, I'd like to reappoint.
You can go sit down.
Carla Kerlin to the Commission on the Status of Women.
To reappoint. Carla Kerlin.
I agree. I want to order GWP Commission Ed Abrahimian, the director of Los Angeles.
Oh, nice guy.
Yeah. So those will be on the agenda next week? Yes.
Okay, he's a great guy, very talented, great choice. Okay, Margaret Hammond, followed by Francisco Camacho.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff, and my friend, who is, this is her last council meeting, Elaine. It was wonderful having her and being able to go to her and get straight answers about a lot of things that maybe I would not have been able to get in other places or other times. Although I must say about the specific plan, if you're going to turn it into Toronto, it's not going to be my thing. I was glad to leave Toronto and come to Glendale. It's one of the reasons why I settled here, because I, you know, Toronto has always had the tallest building in the world, one of the tallest, and it was great when you were growing up and going downtown and that, but when you ended up living out in the suburbs to go downtown and have all those tall buildings and so forth, I don't know. I really loved Glendale when I came. That's why I wanted to live here. I thought it was a wonderful, small town to, after being brought up in downtown Toronto. As a matter of fact, I was a Cabbage Town kid, which I don't know if Elaine remembers that saying. It was part of Toronto that was considered, I wouldn't say a slum. We didn't have slums per se, but it was kind of the poorer section of town. I have enjoyed living in Glendale. I think we have so many things to be grateful for. We do have great parks, and we do have libraries, and albeit, some things need some fixing up, enlarging, or whatnot, but I've always thought we were very lucky to live here. I've said so over and over for many years. Right now, though, I have a little quibble, and it's really kind of a big quibble, regarding the tearing up of the streets in downtown, or South Glendale, as we call it, all the way from San Fernando Road across Central, across Brand, across Glendale Avenue, and along Palmer. I mean, it's been going on for quite a while. Every single main street has had big holes in it and causes traffic that's coming north into the city to be jammed up quite a bit. And the reason I'm particularly upset is because we have ended on Cypress Street, which is strictly a residential street, being the detour, that people do not want to take Glendale up to, Palmer is closed off a good part of the way, which a lot of people used, and Chevy Chase had holes in it and to get along there. So what they're doing, they're using Cypress. They're flying over the hill and around the curves. I guess what we need to do is think about bumps, because I know a lot of my neighbors are really concerned, especially at rush hour in the morning and at 5:00 at night. You can't get out of your drive, or you're almost afraid to go out to try to get in your car on the roadside of it. So I don't know how long that's going to be. I know that right now it is jammed up again, and for how long, because it was jammed up for a long time while Adams Square was being worked on, and then it was jammed up again when, I don't know what they were doing to the sewers where the habitat is now in. It was torn up there for months and months, and as I say, now it's torn up again. And it's like they put it down, and then it's torn up again. So while we do appreciate you thinking about us and trying to get our roads and streets in good condition, it is causing havoc with our traffic in our areas horrendous. So I do appreciate that thought. The other thing is, I want to bring up on Monday night, the Glendale Coordinating Council is having their meeting, and it's going to be at the police station. And we're going to the dogs, as Al says. I reminded him, and he went like, huh? And that our meeting is Monday night. Anybody that's interested in the Glendale Coordinating Council meeting, it will be Monday night at 7:00 at the police station, and we will be taking a tour of the facilities and so forth. I'm looking at him, because I sort of heard it secondhand, but he's the one that made the arrangement, so that's why I want to make sure that I'm saying the right thing. And thank you very much. I hope you all had a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Mr. Zern, can you take 15 to 30 seconds and explain what we're doing, all those tear ups?
Sure.
We've been working on a long time.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the project Ms. Hammond's referring to is probably the largest single sewer replacement project that we've undertaken in the city in quite some time. It does stretch all the way from our corporate yard near the LA border on Chevy Chase, all the way to Adams, excuse me, Adams Hill area, crossing west to east. And as a result of the '04-'05 rains, we found out very quickly that we were under capacity in primarily the Adams Hill area. And in order to make that work, we had to take that sewer upsize, increase the size of the pipe, all the way down to where we feed it into the outfall pipe that goes into the treatment plant. So very large project, but very necessary.
What size was it?
It was, we had a variety of sizes, as small as six to as large as 12, and we're going up to as large as 24.
So this is for the long-term future?
Correct.
Can't do any construction without creating that kind of a situation.
Mr. Mayor, we might note that if you live uphill, such as North Glendale, you probably didn't care that that sewer line was particularly under capacity. But if you lived in the Adams Hill area, you cared a great deal, especially when the storms came, and in fact, there was no more capacity, and as a result, they had stuff in the streets that people don't want in the streets. As a result, this project was given a priority in the sewer increase so we could avert that problem.
That's it. No easy way. What's the length of that project yet?
We probably have, Mr. Mayor, another three months or so to finish that up.
About the Adams Hill area?
That's where it's going to end. So that will be, where you see it now, it's continuing to move east, so it will end up in the Adams Hill area.
Margaret didn't care to hear that.
We're trapped upon the hill, Your Honor. We're trapped upon the hill. We have no way to get down.
I don't know any way around it.
At least you'll be dry. Yeah. You'll be, you'll have, it'll be a better situation when the rains come because of this improvement in that area.
Okay. Next, Francisco Camacho, followed by Sheila McNichols.
My name is Francisco Camacho. I've worked at the Glendale Hilton as a cook for 11 years. I'm also a resident of the City of Glendale. My coworkers and I have been fighting for a better future for our families and for the community. But unfortunately, the company is not, has not been listening to us, and for that reason, as many of you know, we are boycotting the hotel. We have been here to ask for your support many times. A few of us have, a few of you have given us that support, and we thank you, but unfortunately, the majority have not given us that support, and the city is currently violating the boycott. I don't think it's fair, I don't think it's just, that the city council of Glendale is supporting the businesses of Glendale, but the working people of Glendale, you are not supporting. Despite all of that, we do think it's important that the city employees have a holiday party, and for that reason, we are going to throw a holiday party for them, ourselves, on the 7th of December, outside of the Glendale Hilton. So we have some invitations for all of you. You all, everybody here is invited. We just want to turn in those invitations. Thank you.
Thank you. Crosses.
Thank you very much.
Sheila McNichols, followed by Aman Agakani.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, staff, and members of the community. I'm here this evening I'm here this evening for the Republican Buck and Ballot Brigade to invite all of you to a very special evening that we have on December the 14th at the First Congregational Church from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Along with our annual Christmas party, we are going to be recognizing two of the co-founders of this almost 50-year-old organization, Walt and Kay Hunt, who are well-known across the city. Walt has been active in a number of different organizations and Kay's, of course, been very active with the Women's Committee in L'Oreal. We'd like you to check out our website at www.buckandballot.org. To get more information, you can also RSVP there or you can send in your reservation by calling 818-554-0308. And I have some invitations to pass over to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Armin Agakani, followed by Armin Javadian.
Mayor Weaver and dear council members and city staff, my name is Armin Agakani and I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Democratic Club, letting you know that, thank you.
Republicans and now the Democrats.
Thank you. That the club is supporting the boycott of the Hilton and we really urge you to change the venue. I believe, I got an invitation myself as a commissioner and I believe it is very difficult for a lot of the brothers and sisters who are members of the unions at the city to attend this event at a facility that has been boycotted by the other union members. So hopefully, you look into the matter and try to see if you can locate the place to a different place. And I can tell you right now, my behalf, I used to attend the Glendale Hilton for a lot of meetings, including breakfast meetings, and I've stopped doing that. I think it is hurting the Glendale Hilton and I can tell you that all of our members, 140 strong, who are residents of the city of Glendale, have boycotted Hilton and will continue to do so. But at the same time, I have a lot of friends in the business community who are doing the same. I think it is time that we look into this matter and start providing living wages for these individuals and also give them the right to unionize. So please, don't make this difficult for the rest of the employees. Please change the location. And by the way, we're going to start signing petitions and our stands at the farmer's market regarding this and hopefully, you will look into this matter, look into your heart. Don't make this difficult for the rest of the workers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Armin. Armin Javadian.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, council members, city attorney staff and resident of Glendale. My name is Armin Javadian. I'm chairman, Human Rights Central Committee, Armenian Russia in the USA. Also, I'm working in other countries. Two, three months ago, I'm working in Russia, in Moscow city. And my job is protect human rights and also, few months ago, I'm working in Turkish country. And most of my organization members following rules, following law and protect human rights, freedom of speech. Last time, I told about protection journalist, Armenian journalist, he's a resident of Glendale. Thank you so much for listening and appreciate that. I'm listening to your comments, some council members, I'm listening to mayor's opinion about his, I'll say, you know who is Armin, but I will probably, you protect that person. I have an audio file in court in Armenia, we're doing trial. But today, I would like just remember that last time I say, my organization sometimes criticize local administration, not only Glendale, this is Moscow, same problem issue, have a big issue, it's different, but today I would like concentrate most necessary issue. For example, my organization started working 2001 in USA, most in Glendale. I have a result school, elementary school, Hispanic family, his child going school, that have a big problem because today I'm looking for grade. Three years after child don't have, don't have a good grade, so this is maybe thinking school district, but I would like just concentrate about child school and elementary school. Also, I have, my organization have some violation come in local administration. For example, today I would like just only one, explain this Glendale Police Department. I sent federal government some violation, I sent Randy Adams some violation, but never come back, never understand, only city attorney sent me letters, my organization letter, as that letter say, would like discuss about some violation. But anyway, today I would like just only concentrate, protect some resident of Glendale from violation coming from police department. For example, I would like just explain what kind of violation. For example, in 2003 and two, 2006 period, first of all, in February 2003, in Glendale, on the central street located Armenian church, there was doing election meeting come from Armenian Revolution Party, my information, protect Armenia government and president, Armenian president. That time going election, parliamentary election and president. This, I know, I'm member, I'm chief chairman, human rights, I'm understanding everyone free, everyone have a free opinion, I protect anyone who is, have an opinion. But that time, that evening time, some people, for example, namely Joseph, criticized for opinion that party, that some member party beaten him, have a witness and that gentleman, also resident in Glendale, coming my organization and explain what happened. I say only go to local police officer. He's going, went police office, but police offered not support, not help him. This is first of all. Second one, different issue, resident of Glendale, name is, I remember I told Randy Adams about, I meet to him, I would like just prepare that, I would like just to change, I know who is, who is not support police from desk or some officer, but Randy Adams say, I investigate, he's investigate and maybe protect that person. But this is 2006, never coming help that person. But criminal activity in Armenian community, it's not done, continues. Anyway, 2005, people, some Glendale police officer stop one car, driver named Grigor Yevorkian. So finished, maybe next time.
Finished.
But this is important for maybe thinking about.
Basically, pass next week.
Maybe next time, okay.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can suggest, if he has specific complaints about the police department's follow-up, we'd be happy to have someone from the police department meet with him and take a formal complaint. So he doesn't need to come here, he's certainly free to come here, but we'd be happy to have somebody from the police department meet with him, take his complaints and follow up on them. As you know, we deal with lots of.
Would you like to do that, sir?
Crime issues.
Okay. If you'd.
Would you get his?
Put your phone number, put your phone number right here so we can contact you. Thank you. That completes our communication. In a minute, we'll get the next action item.
Eight is action items and eight A is city manager regarding update regarding Grandview Cemetery operations and request for appropriation at eight A one is motion providing direction to staff regarding continual Sunday operations. At eight A two, resolution of appropriation amount of $77,410 or three, resolution for appropriation in amount of $55,040 or four, resolution of appropriation in amount of $47,940 or five, resolution of appropriation in amount of $37,870.
Thank you, Mr. Starbird. You're going to go to Elaine.
I'm going to Elaine Aguilar, Deputy City Manager for the staff report, pardon me, Assistant to the City Manager from the staff report. Elaine?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Staff is here this evening to provide an update regarding the Grandview Cemetery operations to date, to request direction regarding future Sunday operations and to request approval of an appropriation to provide funding for the Sunday openings. During the first portion of this presentation, Senior Assistant City Attorney, Michael Grant, will provide a brief update regarding the current legal, status of the legal issues concerning the cemetery and I'll follow him with a brief report summarizing the 13 Sunday openings to date and also summarizing the options that are presented in the staff report. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Grant.
Mr. Grant. I presume.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Starbird and staff. Basically, there are two different legal actions which I'll talk about and very, very briefly. One of which is, is being brought by the Attorney General's Office against the cemetery and the Attorney General had an action against Marsha Howard, who has passed away. The Attorney General had negotiated a deal with her in which she was going to turn over her interest to the other co-owner, Mr. Goldman, but she did not sign the agreement and she passed away. So that one action is sort of pending right now and the Attorney General sent me facts tonight stating that he's going to be holding with the administrative law judge a hearing to determine who's going to step forward and possibly step into her shoes and, and exercise her right for her ownership of, of the company. There was a trial scheduled on revocation of her license, but that's been put off now since she's deceased. So basically, that's the administrative law hearing, you know, they were going to pursue the revocation of her license, but at this point, they're just trying to determine who is going to step forward and next to kin possibly to see if they're going to want to resolve the cemetery issue. The other issue and, and we have here tonight, Mr. Paul Ayers, is the civil lawsuit and that is being brought by many people in the community who have loved ones at the cemetery, who have either purchased plots or who have already loved ones buried there. And that is against Marsha Howard, Mr. Goldman and other persons who the plaintiffs are trying to bring into the lawsuit, other past owners of the cemetery. And at this point, that is basically where they're at. The plaintiffs are trying to bring in other possible potential owners who might have some responsibility for the condition of the cemetery. And at the same time, other persons in the community are joining the lawsuit. Our office has been attending many of the proceedings in that law, that civil lawsuit and the judge will have us, well, not us, but will have the parties returned in January once again to see who's going to step forward into Marsha Howard's shoes. She has, you know, some responsibility. On the other hand, she has an interest and shares in the, in the, in the company that owns the cemetery. So it's moving very slowly, unfortunately, I have to say, but that's to be expected in this type of situation.
Well, there goes the crux of the matter because depending on what action we take here tonight, it's a question of us funding to keep the cemetery open. I'd like to hear more, if there is more to tell, that the parties are kind of languishing because the city has stepped forward and is opening it up. The outcry to move ahead and get this settled isn't moving as fast as it could. That's true. I'd like to hear.
I, I think that there is truth to that. In fact, Paul Early and I have, as I said, mentioned, attended some of the proceedings and this was a very important issue at one point, but it sort of fell apart when the parties couldn't reach an agreement, when I say parties, the plaintiffs and defendants, about how they could open for three days in a row and how it could be paid for. I've noticed in the last several proceedings that I've attended that that issue about trying to get it open more frequently has dropped off the radar screen. And now what is basically, as, as an observer, what they're basically sort of in their litigation mode now, you know, trying to get the proper parties in, trying to discover documents, move documents. But the idea of, of greater openings or extended openings is no longer really been discussed lately.
Okay. In your view, and I'm putting you on the spot, in your view, how long could this go on, that the city might have to be involved while this litigation's going on? Could it be six months, a year?
Unfortunately, and I think also Mr. Ayers, as a plaintiff attorney, can also address this because he has, as a plaintiff attorney, he also experienced, which I'm going to tell you right now, in another cemetery in Compton, which is known as Woodlawn, and he's defending the cemetery and that, and that's been going on for more than six years.
Six years?
Yeah, more than six years. So there's the potential that this could go on for quite a long time.
Mr. Najarian.
Thinking this thing over, I, you know, a thought crossed my mind. Is there any way that the city may enter the lawsuit as a plaintiff and intervention and claim compensation from a recovery, whenever that may be, for the expenses and the time that we have put in by serving the plaintiffs in this case and giving them access to the suit? That way, our money could possibly be recouped at, in some form, at the, at the conclusion of the case. It's kind of an off-the-wall idea. I'm not.
Well, I'm not sure it's, it's an off-the-wall idea. It certainly has merit in terms of attempting to gain compensation for the money that the taxpayers had to pay out to put the cemetery, to keep the cemetery open. But we were not obligated to do that. One of the problems I see, and we can certainly look at it, one of the problems I see just quickly, is that the city, looking at the residents and other individuals who have loved ones buried there, decided on its own to, as a community service, open up and negotiated an agreement with the operator, Mr. Goldman, to do that. So I think it would be very difficult for us to seek compensation for something we voluntarily did on behalf of the community. We can certainly look at it to see if there's an opportunity there. Whether or not we want to join this case is another, is a whole other matter. There may be another avenue, but we can certainly look at it and I don't know, I can certainly turn to Mr. Grant to see if he's explored that to some degree already.
Yes, we have and we did research it. One of the things, there are a couple of items that eventually we will seek reimbursement for. We did have to remove some hazardous materials. We did put some fencing up to make it a little bit more safe for Sunday visitations. So we, we did notify the judge and the, and the judge knows that at a future date, we are going to ask for reimbursement for some, some items.
Mr. Cantarella, Mr. Starbird.
So many issues, I mean, we could be here all night, but one of the things that strikes me, I assume that in all of these discussions, there are no discussions in terms of the commercial feasibility of once again having this operator or another operator run a cemetery and et cetera, et cetera. I mean, that is not even being discussed. Is that correct?
Not at this time. You know, there have been offers made to, offers were made to Mrs. Howard, excuse me, Ms. Howard and to Mr. Goldman, but I guess in their business relationship, they could not agree, again, this is only what I'm hearing, they could not agree on a, on a price from some buyer. So there were some offers in the past made, made to the owners.
Okay. So there is a commercial entity out there somewhere that has expressed an interest in perhaps once again returning this plot of land to productive use.
That's what you hear.
That's, that's what I heard. And also, Mr. Starbird, I know, had an opportunity to meet with Forest Lawn officials and.
Yeah. Mr. Starbird is next. Go ahead.
Well, a couple of things. On that point in particular, what we heard from Forest Lawn was that in all likelihood, with the notoriety that's become attached to the cemetery, with the legal issues outstanding, with the concerns over the way in which remains have been handled in the past, with the lack of considerable capacity remaining. I mean, there may be some capacity, but whether it is enough to really be a viable operation. Forest Lawn's view was unlikely that you'd have any substantial cemetery operator being willing to step in to either operate or to purchase. A second point I wanted to raise is that we knew in recommending to you that we proceed with opening the cemetery, and I continued to phrase it unlimited basis, was that we could very well be grabbing the proverbial tiger by the tail and how do we turn loose? But I think your first concern and our first concern was the well-being of the, of the victims of this whole situation, which is the families and loved ones of, of individuals who were interred there. And we've seen that. We saw that at the community meeting that we held. We had over 150 residents, some of whom drove hundreds and hundreds of miles to attend that public meeting. We've seen every Sunday in the neighborhood of 125 to 150 individuals.
Every Sunday?
Pretty much every Sunday. It's been pretty, a lot of people, a lot of the same people repeat coming in every weekend. We, as Elaine will note, we've become very concerned about what will happen now with the winter months and the grass growing and the trees getting wet and probably requiring more maintenance. So we get very concerned about that and I don't think that's included in the estimates of what it could very well cost on the horizon. But, but our first concern has been to provide some level of limited access. Our feeling now is that it doesn't necessarily have to be weekly, but. Our feeling now is that that doesn't necessarily have to be weekly, but in any case, I think that, you know, when you meet with 150 or 200 families, you can't help but feel there needs to be some level of assistance provided here, even though we wouldn't recommend that you even begin to attempt to restore the cemetery to the condition that I think the family members would like to see. That is going to have to wait for the resolution of the litigation.
Well, and the reason I asked that question was because while it may take quite a while for the legal issues to be settled between the two former operators and et cetera, the bottom line is, there's literally no hope. Once those issues are settled legally, then what? I mean, either that becomes a commercially viable cemetery or, you know, where's it going to end? There's no money in the trust fund.
Let me try, because we have done some research on what could be an ultimate conclusion, but a lot of that depends on what the owners feel they may have in remaining value. But we think there could eventually be some mechanisms like the formation of a nonprofit corporation that could be supported by the current family members. We actually raised that prospect when we had the community meeting with over 200 people present. We were frankly very overwhelmed at the number of people who turned up for that meeting. And again, many drove long, long distances to be there. Our belief is that there is a base, there is still a strong connection between this cemetery and a large base of individuals both in and outside of Glendale, and frankly, they are all walks of life. You've heard many here, many Armenian families, many, many non-Armenian families, connections to that cemetery that go back decades. And it's our view that if there were a mechanism, there could be an opportunity with some facilitation by the city to possibly form a nonprofit corporation, not to necessarily continue operating as a cemetery, but to begin to maintain the current cemetery and keep it in good order in some form. But that would take the tremendous cooperation of the current owners and who knows how that would be received by the current plaintiffs. So we've just anticipated, that is a likely scenario. The best one would be as if somebody saw value in getting it back in a condition and operating it. Everything we've heard from other cemetery operators is that's not likely. So it's probably going to take some time before that critical mass builds to the point that these other options would be available. As long as the current owners think there's some remaining value, then it's probably going to be difficult for it to transition to something that would work long-term. But then again, everything we've heard may be wrong and maybe there'll be a white knight who'll come in and save this thing. Everything we've heard, though, is that isn't likely.
Any other questions for Mr. Grant?
Well, if not a white knight, if the liabilities have been taken care of, then a smaller operator, obviously it wouldn't be a Forest Lawn, which is a large corporation, maybe a smaller operator could go up in the mausoleum type of, make it commercially feasible by going up and...
That is correct. I mean, there's some thought that in the back of one of the north mausoleum, that another structure may be able to be built, making it somewhat financially viable, but again, you know, it's...
Once the liabilities have been taken care of, that's the issue.
Yeah, that's the issue.
Yeah, the liabilities, which are more, at least it seems to me, more than just the debt issues, there's also these outstanding issues with the Attorney General relative to the current remains on the site and what happens with those. And it's just such a mess that I can't imagine somebody would come in. The other concern that we've had, as there has been at least one instance where there seemed to be some interest by a party to come in and at least purchase a portion of the operations, our concern is that if that isn't viable, then we just defer the inevitable and we're sitting here doing the same thing two or three or four or five years from now. And that is, you know, a lot of disappointment, shuttered gates, maybe even more plots sold for which you then have questions about whether the people can use them. And the need to have in some resolution, some assurance, is going to be a permanent resolution of this and not just a holding pattern while we wait for this problem to occur again down the road.
Thank you. And Mr. Najarian?
I hate to jump ahead, I know we have a lot of reports coming in, but, you know, Mr. Starbird, as you said, even if we get past the liability issue, which I think, as it drags its way through the courts, may take years to unfold, there may be collection issues, there may be bankruptcies, there may be all sorts of other problems, but assuming we could wave our magic wand and make all that liability disappear, I think we're still looking at a limited space with a limited life, a business that really counts on, well, just look at Forest Lawn, I think a lot of their success is based on their ability to continue to expand their operations and to take in new plot reservations and provide more services. And as far as it relates to the city, I hate, again, repeating your issues, I'd hate to be here in five, six, seven years, just continually pouring money into this thing with no end in sight and perhaps the end in sight being a total collapse. So I would like, and you may be able to report on this if you know, I mean, what is, I don't know if there's an expert out there on cemetery operations, but this can't be a first impression. I'm sure other cemeteries in other cities have gone through the same issues and what happens to a cemetery where you're built out, there's no more internments, there's no more room for mausoleums? How does the neighborhood deal with it? How does the city deal with it? How do the loved ones who have, folks who have their loved ones in there, deal with it? We need some expert advice and consultation on that.
I think we can definitely, you know, look further into that. I mean, for an immediate answer, I do believe Mr. Ayers might be able to give a little bit, since he's been involved in Woodlawn since 2000 and he might be able to tell what a long-term or future might lie under those circumstances.
But there's no reserve fund set aside.
There is an endowment fund.
The endowment fund, according to the Attorney General, the endowment fund, there's still a million dollars and it is earning interest in it, yes.
Okay, so the future, once it's built out, so to speak, there is that endowment?
Theoretically, an endowment fund is supposed to be, have enough money, including interest earnings, to be able to maintain the cemetery. That, however, and it's something we discussed with Forest Lawn, is generally not the case. There's been attempts to try to have endowment funds increased through state legislation, that's been defeated. One of the issues right now is that the endowment, does the endowment fund even make enough money to purchase liability insurance?
Yeah. If I can, Mr. Mayor, based on the feedback we had from Forest Lawn, if you applied the standard that Forest Lawn uses for putting money into its endowment, there'd be an endowment of about three times what there is currently available. And we recently had some information historically about an evaluation of the Grandview Cemetery that indicated that they were relying on really revenue being generated by the...
Crematory.
The crematory, in order to support the maintenance of the cemetery. And back then, that was in 91, it was $200,000 to $300,000 a year that was needed to maintain the cemetery. That's very consistent, frankly, with, if you took those up to date today, it's very consistent with our estimates of what it would cost to really maintain that cemetery to the caliber that I think the families would want to see. And that wouldn't be a Forest Lawn caliber maintenance, but it would be far better than it is now. So the numbers we've seen and heard is very consistent. The endowment fund doesn't begin to generate enough interest income, frankly, to even maintain it in its current state. I think the current endowment income wouldn't support our cost of opening it one day a week.
Jeez. Okay, Mr. Mayor, do you have anything else to add or is it back to Elaine?
Oh, back to Elaine, thank you very much.
Thank you. Elaine?
As the council's aware, the first opening, Sunday opening of the cemetery was on August 27th. Legal was able to negotiate a limited access agreement that allows us to go in there on Sundays from noon to four, during which time the city is completely responsible for anything that might happen on the grounds and the city is also responsible for the costs of maintaining those open hours.
Elaine, if I interrupt you, and on that point, I think as Scott mentioned, when the question came up about possibly leaning the cemetery for our cost of maintenance, we had to frankly rely on the cooperation of the current operating owner of the cemetery to allow us to go in and do that. I would imagine if he had thought that he was possibly going to be assessed for these costs, he could have easily just said no and the gates would remain locked and that likely would have happened. So he, in the court recognizing the human toll it was taking, allowed us to go in and do this. So in that context, I would think it would be difficult now to go back and reassess them for that and frankly, if they thought we were going to assess them on a going-forward basis, they might very well say no and they shutter the gates and we wouldn't have access. Sorry, Elaine.
That's okay. To date, there have been 13 Sunday openings and as Mr. Starbird mentioned, the number of visitors, we counted vehicles, it was easier to count vehicles entering the cemetery than it was to count individuals in the vehicles. And the first Sunday was over 400 people, 400 vehicles came to the cemetery the first Sunday and since that time, it has averaged between 120 and 155, this last weekend was 160 vehicles entering the cemetery. Through November 30th, approximately 31,000 has been spent providing access to the cemetery. $10,000 was spent to prepare the cemetery for that first initial opening and then an additional 21,000 in actual operational costs so far. For a number of reasons, including some of them that have been mentioned previously, the continued assumption of liability by the city, serious concerns about the serious maintenance issues that may arise getting into winter, not just the grounds, but also the buildings themselves, increasing costs, unforeseen, the unforeseen maintenance issue. And the weekly openings we're finding aren't meeting the needs of a number of people because only, remember, only, access has only been provided to the grave sites. So there are thousands of individuals in the mausoleum that we are not able to provide access to those people. In addition, as you're aware, there are no burials occurring, et cetera. So we're not able to meet everyone's needs. And most importantly, the lack of resolution, at least in the near future, of the legal issues concerning the cemetery. The staff has presented four options for the city council in the report. The first option is presented just for comparison purposes and assumes that the cemetery would continue to be open every Sunday. The cost through, from December 1, 2006, through the end of June, 2007, the current fiscal year, the cost of these 30 openings is estimated at $46,170, which would bring the total costs this fiscal year to $77,410. While the cost assumed we'd be open every Sunday, the staff's always very cautious to let everyone know in all of our press releases and on the city's website, that some Sundays, it may not be possible for us to open the cemetery because of an emergency, inclement weather, really rainy day, maintenance issues that might arise that would prevent us from opening it on a particular Sunday. So the estimates assume 30 Sundays, but we're always very cautious to say, we don't know whether or not we'd really be able to do that every Sunday. Option two scales it back to two Sundays a month. This would amount to an additional 14 Sunday openings. The cost for the 14 openings is $23,790. The total cost of this option for two Sundays a month is $55,040. The third option is to go with one Sunday per month, except for the months of December and January, because of the holiday season, December and January. The staff report recommends that the cemetery continue to be open two Sundays in December and January and then reduce operations to one Sunday a month for every March, April, May and June. This would amount to nine Sundays at a cost of $16,690, bringing the total cost to $47,940. Option four would be to discontinue operations again, except for the months of December and January for the same reasons previously indicated. So it would really be four more, four additional Sunday openings at a cost of $6,220. The total cost of this option would be $37,873. Regarding all the costs presented in the staff report, these really are only direct costs that are actually incurred. There is no overhead applied, no management time included, code enforcement time, nuisance abatement time, the costs mentioned earlier to put the fence in, to remove hazardous waste, legal department, legal staff time, all of, none of these costs are included in the numbers you've been presented. Those are actual direct costs.
City employees on time and a half in, is it?
We've been able to, I would say, on a rare occasion, there's overtime, but we've been able to schedule using hourly staff, which has an impact on how many hours the hourly staff can work in a fiscal year, but we've been able to use hourly staff and we've made, based upon our experience, we've been able, for instance, to, instead of scheduling police officers at overtime, we've been able to use our park rangers, hourly park rangers.
So we don't have many workers that are on overtime?
So there really is a lot of overtime. Occasionally, we'll backfill with an employee on an occasional Sunday and we may incur overtime.
And I might note too on staffing, we have a cadre of management staff, like Elaine and Kokopanasin, who have volunteered to rotate a Sunday. So we have a manager supervisor there and we have about five or six managers who volunteer to do the rotation. They don't get paid for it, they spend their Sunday out there and they supervise it. That's why frankly during the holidays, we needed to cut back so we could relieve those people of that Sunday duty a couple of times during the holidays, it was getting rather laborious.
What hours is it open?
It's open from noon until four o'clock. And I will tell you, having spent time on numerous Sundays out there, there is a strong appreciation, Elaine's report indicated this, there is a very strong appreciation of what the city is doing here. And it's hard not to have some feelings for the residents who are really left in the lurch in this whole thing. Many not residents, many people outside the city, but you'll see on the Sunday, they have traveled long distances to do a little bit of maintenance, to pay respect to their family who are there. And there is a very high level of appreciation what the city has done. People have come to understand the difficulty of the situation. I think they'd like to have an answer quickly and I think many that the staff talks to, because we get lots of questions, we do a lot of talking to the people who visit, a lot of questions about how long is this going to go on? And frankly, we don't have a good answer for them.
Okay.
So staff is seeking direction regarding which option, operational plan the council would like staff to implement. Attached to the staff report are four resolutions of appropriations, depending, one for each of the four options presented to the council. This concludes my report and either I or any member of the team is available to respond to any questions you may have.
We might note, Mr. Mayor, that under any circumstance, we'd need, even if you chose not to open the cemetery further after first of the year, we'd still need an appropriation to cover existing costs.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I do have one card, okay to hear. Paul Ayers? You the attorney?
We should know, Mr. Ayers, is an attorney representing a number of the plaintiffs.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, city staff. My name is Paul Ayers, I'm a resident of Glendale and I'm also a class counsel for plaintiffs in the Inray-Grandview matter. I'm sitting here, first of all, I want to thank the city for allowing the cemetery to be open. I get a lot of calls from a lot of emotional people who feel very strongly about being able to visit their loved ones. It's a very, very, very big thing. And it's not only a very big thing in this cemetery, every cemetery case I've dealt with, it's a very big thing. And as a baseline, we're right at the baseline in terms of allowing people to come into the cemetery. You start getting below that, you're going to have people coming over the walls. I've had it in other cemeteries happen as well, because there's some people that just simply will not, not give up the ability to come and visit their loved ones. One of the things, one of the fears I'm hearing tonight, and it's a valid fear, is Vietnam fear. We're going into the swamp, how do we get out of the swamp? The good news is, the very good news is, is if somebody can come to Judge Moore, who is the judge in charge of the civil case, who basically has the ability to wave his gavel and make things happen, with a plan that would allow the cemetery to be rehabilitated and opened, he will go with it. When we ran the numbers, when we were most involved in trying to figure out how to do this on our own, that is the parties, and I have to say that all the parties, everybody that's involved in this, want the cemetery to be open. Nobody has an interest in keeping the cemetery closed, it's basically dollars. We ran the numbers and because we don't have to have the kind of staffing that the city needs, we came up with a number of about 100 to 150,000 a year. When we ran the numbers, our shortfall, when you took the endowment care, which is giving us about 3,000 a month, the crematory, which could probably produce about three to four a month, and then if we could start doing internments, which the judge has ordered us to come up with a plan for by January 5th, so we're going to be presenting plans for internments, disinternments and headstone placement on January 5th. If you could take all that together, we came up with about a $5,000 to $10,000 shortfall per month that we needed to bridge. We put forward some ideas on how to do it. In the case where I'm defense counsel for Woodlawn Cemetery, where I was, where I still am, six and a half years later, what happened is the insurer stepped in to bridge the gap. That's not going to happen in this case, they don't have to do it. I respect their decision not to do it, that's their choice. But that's where we were and that's kind of where it all fell apart, because at the end of the day, we... end of the day, we just didn't have enough money to bridge the gap. But let me tell you about the cemetery. Cemetery's not a bad cemetery. My cemetery, Woodlawn Cemetery, is a problematic cemetery. It's built out, it's got a decent endowment care fund, but it's, we can't do any interments at all. We have a church that's interested in buying it. In Long Beach, we had a cemetery called Sunset, and the survivors took over it. So what Mr. Starbird has been talking about, in my opinion, is the right direction. We need to find some kind of vehicle that's not the city, and probably is not Forest Lawn, that's going to operate the cemetery. Maybe a nonprofit, maybe a mom and pop. It's got good bones, the cemetery has good bones. You could, you have space there for interments, you have space there for cremation interments, columbariums?
What does that, I'm sorry, Mr. Ayers, what does it mean when you say it's got good bones?
Good vibes.
He's an attorney.
It's not to be an attorney, but, no pun intended.
It was no pun intended. It was no pun intended. When you look at a, I don't know, my wife likes to look, my wife likes to kick tires on houses. It's what she does on the weekends. She goes and she says, "This house has great bones, you know, we could take this out, do this, and do this." That's a lovely cemetery. It's got a, it's a true turn of the century cemetery. My family has been in Glendale since 1926. My grandfather sat where you are in 1953, Cary Griffin, and I have a real sense of what Glendale's like. A cemetery doesn't turn into anything else. He's not on the wall, he was never a mayor. After nine months, he said, "I've had enough of this and left to go to Europe and write for the Glendale News Press." He said, "I don't want to do this anymore." A cemetery has to stay a cemetery. Of all the types of real property in the United States, the only type of real property that can't change what it is is a cemetery. Market is not going to fix this for you. Nobody can come in and turn this into condominiums. And it is a part of your community, and it's a beautiful cemetery. It truly is. It's a beautiful cemetery. You have to look at what it can be once it's been rebuilt. Now, the city can't do it, I think it's ultra virus, although the city of Long Beach owns a cemetery. I don't know if you guys can own a cemetery, I'm not sure. As a citizen of Glendale, I want you to own a cemetery. But what you have to understand is this is part of your community. It's not going away. It's there. It's not going to turn into condos, it's not going to turn into anything else, it's going to be there, over there in West Glendale forever. Because if, unless you can get a court order for every one of the 40,000 to 100,000 I've heard is in there, and we haven't looked at the documents yet, you can't, you can't change it. So it's your problem in a sense, it always will be your problem in a sense. But at the same time, again, there are ways, there are people that are willing and ready to help the city get out of the commitment that you're being asked to make. And just because I'm here right now, I will make the pitch to you. I would like you to keep it open as much as you can, but at the same time, as a citizen of Glendale, I would say you're right to be concerned about where's our endgame here. With that, I'll answer any questions you have.
So your feeling is that there is some commercial viability there?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. There's somebody who will take that cemetery. See, at the end of the day, like I say, it's going to be a cemetery, it's going to be run as a cemetery. I know with my cemetery, Woodlawn, we got money from the class action to restore the cemetery and make it pretty so that then it became attractive. Now, I'm not saying that could happen in this case, it happened in that case, but that's one of the, that's one of the possibilities that emerges from the class action.
How many more?
And again, one thing I'd like to urge you again is, don't be completely hung up on the idea this is going to take for years. It does take a long time. This case shouldn't take as long as Woodlawn just because a lot of the learning curve with the people involved is over with. That's judges, this is all down a complex, there's only nine judges down there, they know each other, they talk to each other, so they, this is not a new kind of case for them anymore.
How many more interments do you think could take place here?
If you recall, I don't know if this came to the city, there was a sliver up by the dry cleaners up at the north part of the cemetery, that there was an attempt to basically deconsecrate that. That failed, state stopped it. So that area could be grave space. Also, the area in front of the west mausoleum could be grave space. But again, nowadays, because of cremation, because cremation is so big, you could basically take every wall there and put a columbarium on it, and sell columbarium space. I mean, there's, and plus, you have a chapel that people want to use for services. You have a mortuary that has a, the mortuary up in the northwest corner has been leased to a church, but that lease is up in seven years. And that, then you'd have a mortuary. All the things that make a cemetery profitable are not necessarily the ground. The ground is important. To sale the ground's not the most important thing. The most important things are the ancillary services, the embalming, the service, the opening and closing of the graves, all those things. And all those things are present at that cemetery. So again, as I said before, it has good bones.
Well, does it matter? We have to sit here and decide how many Sundays a month it's open. Intuitively, it would seem if we open it less Sundays, we may be forcing the issue to some degree. Because I keep hearing all the parties, you're just sitting there, hey, city's taking care of it, no rush.
No. What happened was we reached an impasse. Like I said, we had a dollar, a dollar shortfall between what we could get out of, you know, crematory, the endowment care fund, etc., and what we needed, we felt, to run the thing. And I run a cemetery with two $10-an-hour workers, and then, and a mow and grow, a mow and bog crew that comes in twice, twice a month. So I can do it relatively, I have done it relatively cheaply. Frankly, the biggest cost is utilities at Grandview, well, we've Grandview, but, you know, it's, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, one of your assets, you're a Glendale resident?
Yes.
You want us to be opening it up every single Sunday?
I guess it's, it's a matter of, you know, I don't know how much that money means in terms of the city of Glendale. How much money do you spend on opening the armory on cold nights? How much money do you spend on things that don't directly go to what a city does? A cemetery, again, this cemetery is part of your community. It always is going to be.
It is a private cemetery, right? It's not the city of Glendale cemetery.
It is Germany after World War II, recumbent on its back in need of the Marshall Plan. That's what this cemetery is. And just like Germany, it can get up and it can take care of itself, but it can't do it right now.
Mr. Starbird?
Mr. Mayor, our concern is as much about the question you pose, which is, how do we get something going, as it is about the money. The gentleman poses a good question, which is, in the whole context of things that we spend money on, you know, this amount in a year is about equivalent to what we spend maintaining a mini park, maybe a little less than that. But to think that by doing that, we're never going to get to an exit strategy, I think that's what concerns us the most. What, as I mentioned before, I think what gave a lot of us some comfort that there could be some mechanism like a nonprofit that could begin to pull this out, is the very large number of people in and outside of Glendale who still have a very strong connection to this cemetery. And all of us on staff, with maybe the exception of Michael Grant, who I know has been climbing a very steep learning curve on this, the rest of us, there's a lot, there's a lot more that we don't know than what we do know about how you might put something like this together. But it does seem that if indeed all of the parties are of a mind to find some solution, certainly the fact that there seems to be hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people who still have a strong connection to the cemetery is an opportunity of some kind that ought to be able to be capitalized on. I would imagine if you went to no openings a month, this chamber will be filled with people.
Oh, yes.
Frankly, I think continuing it every week, I think, does give a bit of a sense that things can go on, because people get accustomed to every week, they can go a day a week, they get adjusted to that. And my concern is there isn't enough tension there then to cause people to really want to come together and look for a long-term solution. But my guess would be less than two times a month, and I suspect we would have a lot of people coming down to these meetings.
Starbird, if we're going to go through two in December and January, that gives in essence two months to get used to twice a month opening, couldn't we judge over that period of time whether the chambers are full or would people accept and live with the two times a month? So continue on the two times a month.
It would certainly give us a sense, and you can always go back to more a month if indeed we find that they were having the, as Mr. Ayers says, I mean, we were, when the gates were closed, it was clear people were jumping the walls. I mean, we, in fact, even with the weekly openings, we would go down there one Sunday, the next Sunday, we'd see that there's been additional improvements at a grave site, and the park hasn't been open. So somebody's gotten in and they've been, you know, doing improvements to a grave site. So even a little bit of that occurs. But I do think that along with giving us direction on openings, and if it's two times a month for January, for December and January, and then we'll reassess, I do think we need, we need to begin to proactively sit down to look for long-term solutions for this, and not just allow the court proceedings to run its course.
I absolutely.
If we need to, we need to have Mr. Grant go into court with the judge and say, "Your Honor, we need to really begin to look at how we can solve this long term."
What if we told you instead of any of these options, do the two times a month in December, January, come back at the end of that period, assess what the reaction has been, and then tell you whether to go with the two, or the one, or the four, after we see what two times a month is?
In the meantime, maybe get, you know, with more active pressing on our part to see if we can at least create a forum where all the parties can sit down and look for some long-term solutions. We may, you know, get a sense of whether that's going to be fruitful before then as well.
I think it's important to look at the realities we're facing today in terms of the holidays, December, January. I think we should not be changing the days at this point. I would prefer opening the cemetery every Sunday until a certain timeline. After that, see where we are. Because the holidays are difficult already for families and individuals who have lost their loved ones, and for us to change to two times a month could create undue stress or whatever for the families. I know, I know, looking at the numbers and based on what you represented today and what staff represented, that the initial opening, there were in excess of 400, and last week it was 150, 160. That indicates that there's still strong interest in attending the cemetery on a weekly basis. If it was down to 20, 30, I would say, fine, let's try it every two weeks. But based on the numbers that you have presented, I don't think that's prudent at this time, especially during the holidays, so.
If we take that into account and say, "Do every Sunday through December and January, and then authorize two months then with two times open, and assess."
Yeah, after the holidays might be more prudent.
I might just point out though, and here's a particular problem, again, keeping in mind that we're having managers volunteer, and we're having hourly staff now that we're having difficulty, you know, people at first are kind of into this because they can really see the service they're providing. But for example, Sunday the 24th, the day before Christmas.
That you would have to close.
And yet, that could very well be a part of the holiday season when a lot of people want to go visit grave sites. But that would be one that, it's going to be, it's a lot to ask staff to go out and staff the opening for that, for that afternoon.
That's understandable.
Yeah.
I think in general for the month of December.
And the same thing occurs on December 31st, which is the day before New Year's. So on those.
New Year's Eve.
Mr. Counselor? I'd like to go with opening it weekly except for the exceptions that you made, until let's say January 15th, the holidays, the Armenian holidays will be over.
It's just passing.
And after January the 15th, then I think I'm going to be interested in either twice a month, or maybe even once a month. But twice a month to me, I mean, there's just a limit to what we can do. But during the holidays, I think we should continue the same.
Mr. Counselor, if we want that, then try a couple months at two times, and then assess the reaction of the public? Mr. Nukian?
I think it's important to inform those who are attending of our intentions in a couple of months to diminish the number of Sundays that will be open.
Flyers.
Yeah, that will give them enough time.
To adjust.
To adjust, and if there's any further concerns, to let us know in the meantime.
The other thing I.
Tossing out flyers, let's say, on Sunday.
If that seems to be where you're going in the direction, I'd like you to also add direction to staff to, I'll just call it, turn up the heat on, proactively finding and seeking a resolution to this.
Well, and not, to me, it's not just a nonprofit aspect, although that sounds like a great idea, but also perhaps an independent operator, a small mom and pop, as you termed it. If they know that the city is there to help them establish their business, reestablish the cemetery, then maybe, possibly a new buyer, once the litigation is settled, will be more inclined to come in if they know they have a community behind them.
Excuse me, we're kind of jumping back and forth. I know you have formality on this, but let me jump in on, let me jump, okay. Let me jump in on this. I can't emphasize how important it would be for us, for the city to help us find a solution for this. Right now, everybody's willing, but nobody, nobody really has anybody directing them. I don't think the judge can do it. The judge can, when you bring something to him, he will say yes, he will order us to meet and confer, he will order us to enter into a process with the city. But I think it's really important for the city to help us find a solution to this, and it could be a nonprofit, it could be, you know, it could be a small, it could be a number of things, but just to, just to help us find, you know, determine what exactly it's going to take to get the cemetery fixed up. I know the city came up with a number of a million and a half. My estimate, based on what I've done before, was more like a million. But these are, these are numbers that have to be looked at, and somewhere the money has to be found. But the first step is to find a way.
Mr. Mayor, I just, here's been my concern throughout this whole process. When comments are made with the city's help, and we're talking about a million dollars, I know the expectations will be there, that assistance in finding a solution is going to be about money. It's, you know, one of the most important things I think government can do sometimes is schedule a meeting. And bring the people together, and that's an easy role for us to play. But also, many times, people then are less willing to step forward with their own pocketbooks to solve the problem when they think the government is there to do it. And I also know, and we've found out, in providing just a day, a week of operations, there's a very high expectation, especially if the city's involved, as to what people would like to see out there. I would guess if indeed the low estimate is maybe a million dollars in infrastructure needs, it's probably closer to the million and a half by the time you get there. That isn't going to be an easy issue to resolve. You know, that's beyond several hundred well-connected, you know, families that are strongly connected to the cemetery to solve. And that's going to be one of the biggest issues, is not just the ongoing maintenance, but how do you put those facilities back in a condition where they'll be safe, where they can then be maintained, and where they'll be frankly at a level acceptable to the residents that are visiting there. That's going to be, that's going to be a tough nut to crack, because there's been a lot of deferred maintenance in that cemetery.
Saying the city help put together, is that a feasible request?
I think, I think, I think it's very reasonable, and frankly, it's a role we can play to call the meetings. And I think what we've heard today about even the.
The leadership.
The owners wanting to find a solution, that's a very good sign. My concern has been if the owners are thinking they still have a lot of value in this cemetery, then it's going to be difficult to find a solution. Because if they think they can sell this, and there's a lot of value to extract from it, then I don't think you're going to find a very quick solution.
At this point, we do have one really huge uncertainty, which is, what is going to happen to the 51% of the cemetery that was owned by Marsha Howard? We don't know. We don't know how that is going, who's going to get that, how that person wants to approach it. Maybe that person just wants to sell and go. I do know that at one point in the spring, they were asking a million dollars for the cemetery.
That's what, that's what we'd heard.
Yeah.
And with that expectation for value in the cemetery, given the deferred maintenance and the cost of operations, it just seemed to us it was going to be a very hard nut to crack.
But all due respect, you know, there's, 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 there's the Cadillac Cemetery, and there's the Ford Cemetery, and there's all kinds of cemeteries. Cemeteries, I know that the ideal of cemetery is Forest Lawn. That is not the ideal in many parts of the world, and certainly not in many parts of Los Angeles County. So there are, there are ways, and honestly, I wasn't looking at the city for money when I was talking about the city help, but I was basically asking for was scheduling meetings.
Okay, let me ask this, Mr. Starbird. Ms. Ayers, if we go along with what is being proposed, keeping it open each Sunday through the 15th of January, passing out flyers telling you we're going to go to two times for the next couple of months, and reassessing at that time, and in the meantime, city taking leadership role in trying to find solutions, is that acceptable?
If it's acceptable to you, it certainly works for your staff.
And frankly, I have to tell you what the city has done here is without precedent. Honestly, I've never seen this happen where a city has stepped in like this. I think it's a measure of what a responsible place Glendale is, and I can say that as a citizen.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Ayers. In this class action, is it class-seeking monetary damages?
Typically a class action because, and I don't want to explain the legalities, well, you're a lawyer. That's right.
He can explain it to us later.
That's right. Class actions, you can't recover usually personal injury-type damages, so you're basically limited to type contract-type damages, which are not usually that large. But what can happen in a class action is, as part of the class action, you can have things done with regard to the res, with the subject of the class action. For instance, in the Woodlawn case, we had 3,000 claimants who got, I believe the amount was $600 per decedent, but we also got over $500,000 to put into the cemetery. And that was very important to the court, and we're working, we're still working on it now for a number of unrelated reasons, but that is going to allow that cemetery to look good enough probably for a church to take it. Plus, after class action is over, you're washed clean. That is, all the bad things that happened before the settlement of the class are gone. And so the liability aspects go away. So it makes it much more attractive to someone.
And is there a liability carrier that's involved in this case? So is some of the remedy that you're seeking, some sort of infusion of operating capital?
It's a little bit early to say. I think at one point, I can be honest, we did turn to the carrier and say, "Can you help us with that?" And their decision was not to do that, and that's their decision.
Who's the carrier? Are you at liberty to?
Certainly, it's Zerk.
I was, thank you. And with regard to where I was going, I think in terms of just giving notice, we've got to continue at our current rate, at least through the holidays. But after that, I was, you know, I was more inclined to go to the once-a-month option as a compromise, because I still think we are in this Vietnam syndrome. We need an exit strategy, and I think we will continue to maintain the false hopes of the residents that we are going to be committed to keeping this open. And I would go to a compromise to the two days a week, two days a month, and then reassess that after a month or two goes by.
I was looking at stepping down from four to two, see the reaction, see what progress has been made, and if there's no negativity about two, then we could experiment with the one and get it go back to two.
Is it like turning up the heat slowly, so they don't feel it?
Yes.
I honestly have to say that I don't think there's a relationship between decreasing the number of days that it's open and getting anyone else to be more proactive in terms of taking your place. I don't think they're connected. The litigation's going to work at the pace that the litigation's going to work at.
But the progress with the city taking leadership role can move faster.
Yes.
And maybe, Mr. Mayor, again, just an intuitive sense, as we've met with, I mean, we've been literally with hundreds of people who are connected to this, that some, I think many of the families also move into this equilibrium where one day a week is kind of meeting their needs. I think there's also a need to have a little bit of tension that maybe all of their needs aren't being met. As a result, they'll be more quick to, you know, at some point, we may need to organize all of the families that are connected to the cemetery, who may need to be asked to contribute or join in some way to some structure that'll help rehabilitate it and operate in the future. To the extent that their needs are all being met by the city opening it one day a week, then there's probably less incentive to do that. So a lot of this, I think, is getting everybody reconnected and in some way having a little bit of tension so people are really wanting to find some solution that they otherwise might not look for because they're comfortable with the current situation.
I call it prodding. Prodd a little, because the comfort zone is apparently set in.
And my sense is going to two days a week, once we get through the holidays, I think, would give us that. Because I think we'll find that there'll be, there'll be a pretty quick reaction by residents, but by then, we should be in a mode of beginning to schedule some meetings to really look for some long-term solutions here.
You need a resolution to that effect? We don't know the dollar amount.
Well, we need to have, we need to have the.
The direction we can give.
Right. Depending, I've heard, just to clarify, I think option two, the resolution for option two would be appropriate at this time. If what I, if I'd like to reiterate what I think I heard, December would be open three days, December 3rd, December 10th, December 17th, closed before Christmas, before New Year's. January, two days, because we would only do it till January 15th, and come back to the council regarding, keeping it at two days a week at that point, in which case, we're really only adding.
No, you wouldn't.
Two days a month, in which case, we're only really adding one day to option two.
You'd be transitioning from, in essence, the four to two for the months of February and March or something.
Yeah, we'd have it open the first two weeks in January through the 15th. We'd be giving notice beginning.
February.
We'd be giving notice immediately.
The Sunday.
The people's visit.
Yes, we could start the Sunday.
Beginning in February, it would be a one month, or two-day-a-month opening, alternating Sundays, we know what those are.
We fund it that far and then see where we're at.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
It'll be 8A1, as amended, to provide continuing open every Sunday except December 24th and December 31st, if feasible, because there may be weather or other considerations that would cause staff to have to issue an order to close it through January 15th, oh seven, and thereafter, opening two Sundays per month if feasible. I heard some also additional language that Mr. Starburt suggested, and that would be for the city to proactively facilitate, not assist, but facilitate, seeking a long-term resolution to reopening and operating the cemetery.
I think that's Mr. Cantaro's motion, and.
And in terms of notification, I want to make sure that we start notifying.
Sunday.
That it's this Sunday.
We'll do it beginning of Sunday.
Passing out flyers.
Not a problem.
The people who visit are very accustomed to getting a flyer when they come in.
Is that your motion? Your second?
Yes.
Okay, then I want to.
Mr. Najarian, second.
Are you second? Okay.
Yeah, I just want to wait one more comment. If, in fact, this cemetery becomes operational again and is held, or comes up to a certain standard, I'm going to personally work on Mr. Weaver, who has often spoken about his plot in Forest Lawn, and see if I can convince him to sell his forest lot.
Sell my lot.
And relocate to this beautiful, what would be a very.
My view is going to be of a Shoal Canyon Golf Course right above my house. I'm in the Glendale, I'm in the Glendale portion of that cemetery, with only one section faces towards where I was born and raised. I'm staying there. I don't know what I'll see in that doggone crib, but that's where I'm staying.
I think Mr. Yusefian has one right next to you to.
He does?
Keep you company to eternity.
Sleepless eternity. I will hear about that tomorrow. Okay. Roll call on that.
Council members, Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Cantaro?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Mayor Weaver.
Hi, and thank you so much, staff, for all your work on this.
We also need a resolution. I'd like to thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And I will be in touch with Mr., and I've been, want to thank you for allowing me to work with Mr. Grant, because he's been really.
No problem. He's a good man.
Ms. Mayor, if I can, before he leaves, there's a city ranger in the back room, Eric Grossman, who has, I think, been out there most, if not all, Sundays.
Oh, that's his role. I was wondering what he was doing there.
He has allowed us, you know, he has given up many, many Sundays, and frankly, he was there when we had the first fire incident and was the fireman on the scene, so to speak, with his ranger unit that has this compressed water system, and quickly doused the fire that could have become a disaster. And Eric has just done a tremendous job.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
And also, we have, I'd like to acknowledge Elena and Sam Engel from Neighborhood Services, they're the other managers who volunteer.
Oh, that's what you're doing here.
Why don't you mention the managers that do rotate through?
Also, we have John Tectolian from our office, everyone in our.
Coco?
John Tectolian, the Coco, Penosian, Lana Lot, and Zazaya.
Any lane?
Can I forget anybody? And me.
So six or eight managers who rotate through.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Howard, you had something to add?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, you do have a resolution of appropriation that we need to be able to have funding.
I don't know what amount, though.
I think the recommendation is the resolution at 8A2, that will certainly be enough money because of this hybrid that you've adopted.
And if we don't need it, it doesn't get spent.
Okay.
Move 8A2.
Okay, roll call.
There was a motion before that.
That was.
Yeah.
Yeah, you voted on the motion to cemetery.
Okay, roll call on this one.
Council members, Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Cantaro?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Thank you again, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good evening. Next, please.
AP is Director of Administrative Services regarding annual activity report, civil service. At AP1, motion to note and file a report of the Civil Service Commission and Administrative Services Division Human Resources on annual activity for fiscal year of '05-'06.
Mr. Najarian.
I have just about five questions on this, but.
What?
Mr. Yusefian gave me a list of five questions.
But he's not here. I would move 8D1.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members, Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Cantaro?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Mayor Weaver.
Hi.
Mr. Doherty, I was still looking forward to the presentation.
Did he give you any questions for 8C?
8C is Director of Administrative Services regarding fourth quarter budget report for fiscal year '05-'06. At 8C1, motion to note and file a report.
Mr. Manukian?
I'll move 8C1.
Second.
When will the audit be completed? Are they on their way with the audit already?
Here comes short timer.
Before Mr. Franz goes to Orange County.
Yes.
Yes, the redevelopment agency audit, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, will be before you in one of your December meetings. Our target date for completing the city audit is the end of December.
And when's your last council meeting?
January sometime.
I'll have to check.
Playing it close to the vest, aren't you?
Right.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.